Good evening. The 66th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members of the press and of the public, if you're in the chambers tonight, if you could please ensure that you silence, if not turn off your electronic devices to assure that you do not disrupt today's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Reverend Dontwan Brody, pastor of the Temple Church and Ministries. It is our pleasure to welcome you here tonight. The floor is yours.
Our Father, how we thank you for another day of peace, purpose, power, provision, and prosperity. Thank you for the wonderful privilege to guide and serve the great people of the city of Baltimore. I pray that you grant each council person clearly of mind and thought. Grant them wisdom and understanding and decision-making today as they give direction for our today and tomorrow. I pray that you bless the communities of the districts that they serve, along with the families, businesses, and nonprofits in those districts. I pray that the matters discussed and granted today will be both a blessing for our now and for years to come. I pray that as you allow them to govern the great people of this great city, that you will govern us to do what is right for the betterment of all people, regardless of race, gender, religion, and economic status. We pray that you not only bless the city council, but all branches of city government. Be a conduit of peace in matters where we may not agree, as well as a bridge for change and empowerment. Thank you for your guidance and grace and a glimpse of our future. In your strong name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Reverend Brody. At this time, I'll ask everyone to stand. I instate the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, for our showcase this evening, it's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Eric Brockman, chairman and CEO of Focus. Focus offers IT training to underserved young adults in Baltimore City to help propel them out of the cycle of poverty into meaningful employment in Baltimore tech workforce. At this time, Mr. Brockman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Council. My name is Minister Eric Brockman. I have 40 years of experience in the IT field. I created an organization called Focus on Communities, United for Success. Next slide. And given that we, young people, an opportunity to learn IT, and not just learn IT, but to become certified in the IT field, in the A+, and Network Plus, Security Plus. I have multiple certifications and comp tier myself. And in doing so, you notice last, a couple weeks ago, Baltimore was named a tech hub. And being a tech hub, we want to present, we want to be able to train our young people and get them prepared for these jobs. In fact, I have several of my students there in the back here that came to support us. Amen. Also, next slide, please. If you notice the statistics, 67% of IT jobs are held by white employees versus 6.5% black. The reason is, is that lack of IT education, underemployment, and also underserved communities that do not have the necessary resources for IT. Next slide, please. Focus is a conglomerate of nonprofit and for-profit companies that are designed to help to revitalize Baltimore City through the use and training of IT for free for the community, individuals in the community of Baltimore. We are funded through grants, sponsorships, and fundraisers that allow us to provide this training for free. And not only that, the students that come through the program that get their certification, it's a lifetime program so that they can, 10 years down the road, can come back and be certified or get certified in the things that we're training. Also, Focus, the for-profit companies are, we have a consulting service, which we want to go after local, state, and federal contracts so that we can employ our students. And also, we have a staffing agency, which will allow us to get our students' experience while they're in the training. If you notice that the colors here, here is the yellow color, and you'll see it's student partners. What it is, is that we have young people that come through the program that are 100% vested in the program. They become certified partners, and they share in the revenues of these companies. These companies also provide revenues that go into the city to purchase dilapidated homes and dilapidated warehouses, thereby creating affordable housing, and also affecting the food deserts and tech, the tech deserts in Baltimore City. If you notice the funding, we have an organization called Focus Community Development Corporation. The Community Development Corporation allows us to pay for funding for revitalization of the community, also allows us to fund more startup companies, and allows us to fund training. If you notice that the funding also comes through these three companies, will go back into funding, and funding more training so we can train more people. This is an engine. It's an engine that's designed to revitalize, to help to revitalize Baltimore City by creating workforce in the residents of Baltimore, and getting them jobs and taking that, that revenue, investing it back into Baltimore City. I'm here because we do, we need capacity building. We need to be able to train more individuals. We've had over 100 applications this year that we were only allowed, able to train 40 to 50 students. And what it is, is that we have a partnership with the Regional F Louvre Museum, so we have a class there, and we also have a class at 6300 Hartford Road. But we need more capacity so that we can train more students, and we also need to be able to pay for our instructors. And the wonderful thing about it is that our instructors come from our students. So we hire our students to be instructors. These are some of our sponsors that have contributed to our organization and continue to support us. And the last slide is my background. Thank you very much. I appreciate being able to talk to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brockman. Hold on, you have to turn it back on.
Mr. Barnett, my district eight, my councilman. How you doing, sir?
Thank you so much. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll now proceed with adoption of journals. Madam Clerk, if you could please.
Mr. President, the journal for the October 30th, 2023 regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing on, the journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found at the beginning on page two. Before we go into, next up, we're going to have executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first nomination.
EA 23-0212, David Marcosi, member, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 1.
This bill has been assigned to rules and oversight.
EA 23-0213, Elizabeth Cornish, member, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 12.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. At this time, we're going to go to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0450, Charter Amendment, Approval or Veto of Legislation for the Purpose of Amending the Period During Which the Mayor Shall Return an Ordinance or Resolution to the Council if the Mayor does not approve of the ordinance or resolution permitting the City Council to override a mayoral veto at a regular or special meeting of the City Council and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsored by President Mosby.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we've discussed and as we've seen through this redistricting process, you know, the charter is riddled with certain things that directly impact the council's inability to take out full legislative action. One of those is the inability to override a veto in certain timeframes, one being redistricting and the other having some issues and problems with the budget process, the ordinance of estimates. Whether Congress, the General Assembly, or many other, most other legislative bodies, you know, this council should have the full autonomy to take any legislative action associated with the process of what voters put us here to do. So this charter basically calls out and removes that section of the charter to ensure that the council, all the way through the very tight window of redistricting, at the end of that rainbow, have the ability to override said veto in an appropriate timeframe. So with that, that bill has been assigned to rules and legislative oversights. Before we go into resolutions to be introduced, add you to, oh, to that bill. If we could please make sure that Vice President Middleton is on the bill, Chairman Costello is on the bill, Chairman Conway is on the bill, Councilman Glover is on the bill, Chairman Stokes is on the bill. Thank you so much. As we proceed to go on to, to resolutions to be introduced tonight, you know, how this is an important time for all of this, maybe about 10 minutes ago, we received communication from the mayor's office that he vetoed. Could you pull that up real quick, sir?
From Nina, hit the top one.
So at 5:03, the mayors sent us communication that he ultimately decided to veto the redistricting map that we went over. Not much time to read, I guess, some of his concerns, but the problem is this council, this body, at this point, has no ability to take any additional action if we were not to do so today. That was the opinion provided by the city solicitor. Obviously, in no stretch of imagination is this good governance. What I will say is I appreciate the hard work from members of the council, as well as from members of my staff, who have been working literally as of today to see if there, if we could continue to work forth a path not to put the council and the administration, but more importantly, the citizens of Baltimore in this predicament. Many communities from Morrel Park to Howard Park, to Fells Point, to Chum, around the city from northwest to southeast Baltimore, participated in a process that this council held to ensure that members of the public had the ability to participate in their government through this really, really important redistricting process. Redistricting, as I discussed, is literally the foundation of our democracy, of what we stand on as it relates to ensuring that our voices are heard through representation in the bodies in which. And unfortunately, we are at this point where we proactively kind of communicated, if you guys will all participate in the meetings with us, to ensure that there was some dialogue. But more importantly, we wanted the citizens of Baltimore to provide and have access to the process of participating in the process and being part of the discussion of the map. And that's exactly what we did. Through town hall meetings, through council meetings, we have hundreds and hundreds of residents from all throughout our city come and provide their testimony as it relates to their support or opposition associated with it. And then the council came up with a map that took all of that into account. And when you look at from a contiguous perspective, when you look at it from a compactness perspective, when you look at the variations associated with the district layout, the council's map quantitatively was better than the other map. What I will say is, it wasn't a different map. We just, we just took a good map and made it a little bit better based off of what we heard from our residents. And it's unfortunate that we stand here today. And for those of you who are not participating, who are not listening, who are not engaged in this process in the way that you should, this is not the way government should operate, period. We shouldn't open up a city council meeting and receive a letter like this. There's a lot of time, a lot of attention, a lot of work that has been put into doing the right thing for the citizens of Baltimore, and I cannot say that this is good government. So with that, I'll ask folks to support that last charter amendment. Look for other charter amendments that will directly go after ensuring that the next round of this process, that the council has its full legislative autonomy, but more importantly, that the citizens are part of the process. With that, we will go into resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Bill 23-0196R, Baltimore United Against Book Bans for the Purpose of Condemning Book Bans in Public Schools and Libraries. Sponsors, Torrance and the administration.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsored bill. Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in the spirit of James Baldwin and to the spirit of the purpose of education. Finally, it's creating a person's ability to look at the world for himself, to make his own decisions, to say to himself, this is black or this is white, to decide for himself whether there is a God in heaven or not, to ask questions of the universe, and then learn to live with those questions. In this way, he achieves his own identity. But no society is really anxious to have that kind of person around. What society really, ideally, in what it is, is a citizenry in which they obey the rules of society so that we can suppress speech. Tonight, friends and colleagues, I rise because this is important, that we send a message to our neighboring counties, as well as our citizens, that we respect people's identity. We respect the right to learn from others, to learn their experiences, to walk in their steps, to walk in their shoes, whether it be via book or just including the idea in our education system. I say that because it was not too long ago that Baltimore City Schools created a new reductive, reproductive health curriculum that led to the largest decline in teen pregnancy in the city of Baltimore, as well as the country. We were in the single digits because of a creative approach that allowed us to educate our young people in classrooms. We have young people in our classrooms who are struggling with their identity in the way that society is. As a person who was born and raised in Baltimore, I can tell you, the history of Baltimore is not, and I say this as I share with my constitutional law students, not cute. It's not something that we can inherently live with without thinking about how our identities are shaped, how our neighborhoods are shaped. Until we expose people to those ideas and those identities, we are not a society of free thought. There is no marketplace of ideas. There is no marketplace of democracy. So tonight, I ask that you support this immediate, this immediate resolution to support that we want, want ideas in our classrooms, we want ideas in our libraries, and we want ideas in our streets. Thank you.
You would like the immediate adoption, correct?
Yes, sir.
Please move for it.
I so moved for immediate adoption, Mr. President.
What, for rules, for immediate adoption?
Yes, I moved to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Without objection, the rules to suspend will be adopted. Hearing and seeing on, the rules are adopted. At this time, Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I so moved for immediate adoption.
He moved the resolution. At the time, Madam Clerk, it's been moved and probably second. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett, Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. At this time, we'll proceed with 23-0197R. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution 23-0197R, Recognizing National Apprenticeship Week, November 13th through 19th, 2023, for the purpose of recognizing National Apprenticeship Week as November 13th through 19th, 2023, and the value that registered apprenticeships add to industry, community, and government workforce. Sponsors, Stokes and McCray.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsored bill. Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I ask to suspend the rules, you know, I listen to a lot of principals in this city, and they always talk about they have 600 kids graduating, but 400s going to college. We have not made it viable for these young people, the 200, that don't want to go to college, their parents can't afford it. We have to do better in making sure we push this out to our young people, not when they get 17, because you know, when you get an apprenticeship, you got to know all the math. We need to have more trips taking young kids over to the unions, over to Tapsico, to make sure they can see that you don't have to have a college degree, you don't have to owe $200,000 if you came out of college. You can go to those programs with a stipend to be a plumber, master plumber, master electrician, and make over $100,000, and you actually don't owe nobody any money. So we have to make sure we have those, some balance there for our young people. We should do better with that. So I make a move to suspend, suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing on, the rules are suspended. Chairman Stokes.
Mr. President, I move the resolution to be adopted.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Madam Clerk, if you could please call roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The ayes have it. The motion is approved. Resolution has been adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. It's their motion to approve the consent calendar. It's been moved and probably seconded. All those opposed, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consent calendar is approved. We will now go to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing on, we are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please go into the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0413, The Solid Waste Management Plan for Baltimore, repeal and replace.
Body would like to recognize Vice President of the Council, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 23-0413. This bill was heard on October 31st and was recommended favorable by the committee. I move the bill favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Amendment. Yes.
We have some amendments on that bill?
Yes, there's amendments.
Madam VP, are there amendments on that bill?
I move the bill favorable as amended.
We have to, we have to vote on the amendments first. I don't think we voted.
Okay.
So just go back. From housekeeping perspective, we are on, City Council Bill 23-0164R. I believe there's amendments, so we have to go and motion to approve the amendments.
Who are the amendments? Not 64R.
I called the wrong bill number?
Yeah.
Which building?
23041.
I'm sorry, 230413.
So I, we have amendments on council member's desk. I move the amendments.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are approved. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And now I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0164R, Informational Hearing, Board of School Commissioners Reporting and Structure.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee held a hearing on November 2nd, the Board of Commissioners reporting and structure, but I just wanted to say that I got a commitment from Chairman McFadden, the school board commissioner. President?
I got you.
Okay. And I made a commit, he made a commitment that I don't have to have another hearing for them to come before the city council to tell, give us an update on what they're doing.
So how's that going to work?
Huh?
So how will that work?
He's going, he made a commitment. He going to update the whole council, and I don't have to have another hearing to make them come before the council.
Okay.
So I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third.
Adopted.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's adopted. The bill will be adopted. We'll now turn the bills on third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0372, Office of City Stat, Establishment and Administration.
At this time, I'd like to recognize sponsors, as well as Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a bill that worked really hard with the administration on to work out any issues or kinks that they had with the bill as it was presented. We came forward with four major changes to the bill, and I'll quickly summarize those for the council members to know what changes we're looking at here on third reader. First, we wanted to change the confirmation requirements to allow the city administrator to select that person without having to have the approval of the council. Second, we wanted to place this position clearly in the CA's office so that it reports to the CA. Third, we wanted to make it a program instead of an office. The vision here is to eventually visit, revisit City Stat as part of a bigger office, so we will be coming back to revisit this issue. And finally, we wanted to ensure that folks put in this position are truly qualified for the position, so we want to increase the qualification for five years in program management experiences. And so these amendments are on your desk. If you have any questions, please let me know. With that, Mr. President, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. We have one nay and 14 affirmative at this time. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Again, please note to the Executive Secretary that we have one nay, and that is Council Chairwoman Danny McCray. At this time, actually, yeah, we have to do, we need to, we don't have to do roll call. It's third reader. We do have to do roll call. So if you could do roll call.
President.
So, I'm sorry. So remember, this is a bill that we deferred a couple times on third reading to provide opportunity for the administration to weigh in on the amendments. So we're going to do roll call. Are you okay with that? We're good?
Has to be held over.
Has to be held over because it's amended. Oh, got you. Because it's on third reading, because we amended it, thank you. It has to actually be held over to one meeting for us to vote next meeting. So thank you so much. Our amazing new addition has got us right. So with that, we'll hear it next meeting, and we can vote it out next meeting, okay? Go ahead.
I wanted to posit, would we consider moving it now?
We can't. So when you amend a bill on third reading, it has to go to the next following council With that, so we'll hear that and take a vote on that at the next meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0393, Street Encroachment, 3424 Toon Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0394, Street Encroachment, 229 East Montgomery Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0397, Rezoning Western Side, North Lehigh Street, Southwest Corner, Eager Street, and Western Side, North Lehigh Street, 52-7 feet south of Eager Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0399, Plan Unit Development Amendment, Ben Hurst Park. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, the last bill.
City Council Bill 23-0423, City Property Renaming Cottage Avenue Park to Candy Strike Park. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now we're going to go into committee announcements. I would like to say first, please remember that the Veterans Day Parade is this coming Friday. We're supposed to line up at 11 o'clock and proceed through the parade at 12. We'd love to have full participation from members of this body. Again, that is this Friday. We're supposed to meet up at 11 o'clock. With that, we're going to go to First Committee, ECD. Do we have any committee announcements tonight? Do we have any committee announcements tonight? The floor is yours, Madam VP.
Just one, the Economic and Community Development Committee will hear Bill Number 23-0436 here in council chambers on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 at 2:00 PM, and that is the Urban Renewal, Brooklyn Curtis Bay Renewal Area Designation and Urban Renewal Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Education, Workforce, and Youth. Moving on to Health, Environment, Technology. Next up, Public Safety, Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill 22-0143R, Informational Hearing, Illegal Disposal of Used Tires on Wednesday, January 10th, 2024 at 1:00 PM here in council chambers at the request of Chairman Stokes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Rules, Legislative Oversight, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not Ways and Means, but Biennial Audits Oversight Commission. We had a hearing scheduled for December 18th at 5:00 PM. We're going to be moving that hearing to earlier in the day to 12 noon. I believe a formal green announcement slip will be read at the next council meeting on November 20th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And last, certainly not least, Finance and Performance. No new announcements there. Also note that the 2024 schedule is now available online, so please look at it. I believe it might be on members' desks. If not, we can send you a copy if you do not have a copy. Regular announcements at this time? Any regular announcements? Going once? Going twice? Nope. Different announcements? Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I'll be hosting a community input session for the proposed plans to revitalize Harbor Place. Colleagues, you all are welcome, as well as any members of the public that are listening at home. The meeting will be at 6:30 PM this evening at the National Federation of the Blind Headquarters, which is in the Riverside neighborhood located at 200 East Wells Street. There is on-street parking as well as structured garage parking inside. Meeting is expected to go until about 8:30 PM. Hope you can join us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any additional regular announcements? I did receive word from Chairman Stokes that former councilwoman, Agnes Welch, birthday is this month. He's not sure of the exact date, but November 20th, but she's turning 99. So we would love to definitely recognize her. Obviously, I had a chance to serve with her son, Pete Welch, when I was a council member, and we hold her up really high and we all stand on her shoulders. So maybe we'll look forward to doing something at a future council meeting just to honor and support her. With that, I turn it over to you, Madam VP. I'm sorry, one more announcement, Mr. Chair?
Yes, and this is for Madam VP. So I do rise to lift the name of my father, Tyrone Bullock. He reached the end of his earthly journey at 73 years old. He was a good man, a father, grandfather, Vietnam-era veteran, also met my mother in the early 70s in the US Army, and so this will be a very special veteran today, so please keep my family your thoughts.
Madam VP?
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, November 20th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now 227 victims of homicide this year and also prayers to the family of Councilmember John Bullock and his father,
No new business before this body. This will conclude the 66th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.